Good evening and welcome to Monday, July 16th, 2018. Board of Commissioners, meeting is now in session. The Pastor Glenn McCraney has been kind enough to come and give us an invocation and pledge allegiance, if you would all rise. Thank you.
Let us pray. O Lord, who is always with your people, we gather tonight as people with a sense of loss. Our feet feels as if we are standing in mud, unable to move. We are unable to look ahead due to the many events surrounding us, which are confusing and often overpowering. We are in a world of twitting, personal insults, shouting has replaced dialogue, a world where people no longer say "thank you" or "please." We fail to look to our past and see where you have walked with us. As we gather tonight, we pray there will be a renewed hope, where we are able to share as a Currituck community, the things and events which impact our future and our local lives. We pray we are able to hear the voices of others, as we seek to God and inspire our neighbors in a common cause. It is an opportunity once again to learn to be civil and to speak freely and openly with friends and neighbors. May we look into the hills whence come for our help, our help coming from the Lord, who made heaven and earth. We pray that thy heavenly vision be relit in the very depths of our souls. O Lord, may the Commissioners, the people gathered here, behold a new renewing of that vision. And all God's people say, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you Pastor Glenn. Great words this evening. First item this evening is the approval of the agenda.
Nation for approval?
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next item is public comment. I don't currently have anyone signed up for public comments. Is there anyone like to speak this evening? No kind words to say about the county? Yes, sir, please come on up. If you would state-
I don't know if you speak now or after the other part. I don't know which I need to do.
What's it in reference to, sir?
The traditional five lines.
Tucker's Cove?
Yeah.
You'll speak at Tucker's Cove.
Yes, sir. Okay.
You don't speak any of the lines.
Seeing no one to speak this evening, I'll go ahead and close the public comments. Moving on to Commissioners' report. Sure you folks have noticed that we've moved the Commissioner's report to the front of the meeting, so we can get some good information out while folks are still paying attention instead of the end of the meeting when everyone's asleep. So with that, I'm going to start out this evening. We have some good news this evening. The Currituck Senior Center wants to announce that they received a $19,433, a $1,943 check raised from Currituck Chamber Springs Social that went on this spring at Sanctuary Vineyards. It was a great event. If you've never been, you should go. Try to go every year. These funds will go to Currituck Senior Nutrition Program to help support the home-delivered meals, which is Meals on Wheels. If you haven't participated in that, please take an opportunity to do that. It's very rewarding. This program helps older people remain independent in their homes by providing nutritious daily meals to individuals who can't shop, cook, or feed themselves. So it's a great program. Stacy Joseph, Senior Center Coordinator, wants to say thank you. Every bit helps. We appreciate all the folks that support the Chamber event through donations, sponsorships, and attendants. The Currituck Senior Center is located in Barco and Knott's Island and Powell's Point. If you want to volunteer or participate in any programs, please feel free to contact the county and get involved. It is a very rewarding endeavor, and it's always much appreciated. I had the great honor Saturday evening to go to the 10th Currituck Fire Graduation Ceremony in Moayoc. Got to see 17 highly motivated new Currituck firefighters, EMS folks. The amount of hours and time and dedication that they put into this training is mind-boggling to me. And the amount of time and energy that the staff and Chief Prevail put into making this training happen is something to behold and be very proud of. So I was very, very proud to be there, and it's really great to see so many folks putting forth so much time and so much effort for nothing, other than wanting to serve their county. And that's what makes Currituck great. I know I say it all the time, but it's a true statement. And I'm so proud to sit up here and serve you folks. So thank you for that. And that's all I have this evening. Commissioner Hall?
I also attended the Fire Academy, but it wasn't just Moayoc, as he said. We had multiple departments sending their people to our academy, including Frisco. That just tells me that regionalism is alive and well, and that's how we'll succeed in this area and for the state of North Carolina. Also, we had a new fire truck over at Crawford, where it was painted pink for breast awareness. Thank you Crawford Fire Department. Thank you Moayoc Fire Department and all of our fire departments. Another thing we have is, I attended a funeral the other day, young person. We have a lot of our young folks that seem to be having, whether it's health issues or other issues, we're losing too many. Go home, give your kids a hug. If they need some help, find the help. If you don't know who to call, call anybody. Call a church, call us, call social services, call somebody. You don't have to go it alone. The people in Currituck are fantastic for wanting to help. Let's keep our young kids around, folks. Save the ones we can. Give them a hug when you go home. Thank you.
Commissioner Gilbert?
I want to just offer my regrets for not attending the graduation in Moayoc. I was actually at the funeral that Mr. Commissioner Hall just referred to, and Greg Lewis was a very well-liked member of our community, and his funeral was in Elizabeth City, and I was just overwhelmed with the folks from Currituck that attended. So it meant a lot to the families. On behalf of the Lewis family, I want to thank each one of you that were in attendance for that ceremony.
Commissioner Beaumont?
Two things. One of them was I had the pleasure of attending the Fourth of July celebration at Whalehead Club in Heritage Park. And by all counts, I think we've exceeded all attendance records in attending that event. So I had two kids working parking, and they were really busy. And I think in general, it went off very well. The second thing is, a frequent topic has been, you know, as coming with this season, and it has to do with red flags on the beaches. And for those that are not aware of the impact of a red flag on the beach, which means basically no swimming in the beach or in the ocean. And despite popular discussions, that is not a local decision. Currituck County works in conjunction with everybody from Virginia Beach to Ocracoke, and it is a collective decision. And from what I've been told, if it's red flagged here, it's red flagged up in Virginia Beach, and it's red flagged all the way down to Ocracoke. And it's important to realize, it's not the county trying to be mean, it's the county trying to save folks' lives. I believe Dare County lost someone this past weekend, and, you know, the beaches are red flagged for a reason, and that's, it's too dangerous to have people in the surf. As a reminder, you go swimming on a red flag, that could be up to a $500 fine, and Currituck County will enforce that if necessary. So again, it's not trying to be mean, it's just trying to make sure that every seat that was occupied when you came to visit us is occupied when you go home. So echoing Mike's words, you know, hug your kids, because no man knows what tomorrow brings. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Payman?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to administrative reports. Mr. Bill Sammler from the National Weather Service has been kind enough to give us a presentation. He and his staff, Diane Curtis and Mary Beth Noons, gave us a work session earlier. It was very informative, and he's come to give a little bit of that publicly. Thank you for being with us here today.
Commissioner Hanek, thank you. And to the Board and Dan Scanlon and the rest of the folks here, I really appreciate the invitation. And this gives me an opportunity to address the citizens of Currituck and maybe give them a little bit of an idea of some of the things they ought to be looking for hurricane season-wise, not only this year, but in subsequent years. So I want to really quickly go over the part of the presentation that's least meaningful, and that's the hurricane season outlook. I'll get to why that is in a little bit. But in briefly, it's, the current outlook is for an average to an above-average season. But there are two important factors that may play into this season in terms of the total number of storms that we experience in the Atlantic Basin. Both of them have to do with ocean temperatures. And the first one, I have circled the area in the Atlantic that we consider the development area. And the way you understand this map and the subsequent two maps are, is if you see yellow or orange, that means ocean temperatures are at or above normal. If you see blue, that means ocean temperatures are below normal. So you can see that in the development region in the Atlantic, which spans from the west coast to Africa out into the Caribbean, that by and large, ocean temperatures are below normal. That's been the case for several months, and it hasn't changed. It changed significantly last April and May, which was one of the reasons why we had an active season in 2017. It has not changed this year, and it may have a beneficial impact in terms of reducing the numbers and perhaps even intensity of hurricanes and tropical storms relative to normal. The other is in the Pacific. This is an image from January 1st, where we had El Niña ongoing. It impacted the hurricane season in 2017, one of the reasons why we had the active season last year, and it was one of the reasons why we had the winter that we had in 2017, 2018. But over the last six months, things have changed. This is what the ocean temperatures looked like last week, and you can see that they changed from being below normal to being at or slightly above average along the equator, plus or minus five degrees. And that's the part of the Pacific Ocean that's so key to short-term weather and climate worldwide, not just for us here in North Carolina or in the United States, but globally. We have transitioned from El Niña, which is below-average temperatures in that zone of the Pacific, to where it looks like we're going to be in an El Niño pattern as we go into the fall and in the winter. And it's often hard to predict how quickly the atmosphere responds to this ocean phenomenon, but typically in El Niño years, we tend to have fewer and less intense hurricanes in the Atlantic than we do in years when we don't have an El Niño or we have El Niña. The other thing to note is, and this will just be something to think about going forward, that if we end up having an El Niño in the Pacific this coming winter, chances are that the winter season will be wetter than normal. Maybe not whiter than normal, but wetter than normal. So just something to think about beyond the hurricane season. That said, there is almost no correlation between the seasonal numbers I showed you a few slides ago and impact to the U.S. That's not just impact to North Carolina, not just impact to the east coast of the U.S. That's impact whether you're in Brownsville, Texas, or down East Main. And I'll show you a couple of examples. This is hurricane season 1992. It is made most memorable by Hurricane Andrew, which was one of the five, or one of the three Category 5 hurricanes ever to hit the mainland U.S. coast. But it was in a year when we had only about 50% or half of the normal tropical storm or hurricane activity. So you had half the activity, but one where we had at the time, the number-one disaster from a dollar-figure perspective ever in U.S. history. Steve Lyons, who some of you might remember was the hurricane expert at the Weather Channel for a number of years, did a graphic back in the 2006, 2007 timeframe, where he plotted all of the seasonal numbers for hurricanes and how many impacted the U.S. And you can see, it's pretty much a scatter diagram, but I've highlighted with that circle the years when we had only one impact from a hurricane or tropical storm. And you can see the range of seasonal numbers is from four to 18. So you had a year where you had 18 total storms, but only one impacted the U.S. And then you had a year when you only had four, and one of them impacted the U.S. And that may not have been a hurricane, it may have just been a tropical storm. But the reality is that there's very little, if any, correlation between the seasonal numbers I showed you and impact to the U.S. And the screaming message there is that we should prepare every year as if eastern North Carolina is going to be impacted. That really is the most important thing to take away from this. But there are years, like last year, where the number of storms does correlate to impact to the U.S. And last year, we had three major hurricanes impact the U.S. and its territories, Irma, Harvey, and Maria, largest disaster year from a dollar perspective ever in U.S. history, primarily because of those three storms. But we were due. We had not had a major hurricane affect the U.S. coast in a dozen years, so we were due, because the average is about one every three to four years, and so we'd gone a long time. We didn't expect to get the trio of storms impacting the U.S. the way it did, but that's the way Mother Nature decided things were going to go. But every once in a while, you do get a year like 2017, where the impact correlates to the number of storms, and we had a very active year last year. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about storm surge, because storm surge is really what drives evacuation. We flee from the water, hide from the wind. And you can go even into, back to 1992 and Hurricane Andrew, Category 5 storm, we lost two people directly due to wind, due to Andrew. And Andrew was a Category 5. And many people in the Miami area stayed in their homes, and they survived. You can survive a major hurricane wind-wise, but most people die as a result of water, whether it's storm surge or rainfall. And there's three primary factors that affect storm surge anywhere along the coast. Obviously, the bigger, the more intense storms, the bigger the storm surge. Storm speed is kind of an enigma. In some cases, in some places, the faster storm produces more surge, in other places, the slower-moving storm produces more surge. And then, of course, angle to the coast. The more perpendicular a storm is relative to the coast at landfall, the bigger the surge is. But in Currituck, you actually have two different regimes for surge, one along the coast and one on the sound side. And if you look at the image at the top left, that's the maximum surge for a Category 2 that is expected to be experienced really anywhere in northeast North Carolina. And you can see by far, the biggest storm surge values are along the coast. A lot of that has to do with the ability for a storm to be perpendicular to the coast at landfall, and we've got a larger area of water to be able to draw from to create surge. On the sound side, the numbers, regardless of whether you look at the max or whether you look at Category 2s moving in different directions, are not anywhere near as high. And there's two reasons for that. One is, it takes a certain storm that is moving at a certain direction to draw water up from the Albemarle on the Pamlico Sounds, up into the Currituck Sound, up into Back Bay. That doesn't happen very often. The second thing is, is because you have a limited area to draw surge from, you can't get that much water up into Currituck County, even with the ideal quote-unquote "push of water up into the sounds." So if you look at the top-left graphic again, you can see that generally speaking, on the sound side, about four feet of surge is about the max that you could get for a Category 2 storm. That really just kind of puts it on the potential to being life-threatening, whereas on the ocean side, you're talking about nine to 10 feet of surge with waves on top of that. So the screaming message there is, while the numbers don't show much of a surge on the sound side, it can still be an issue, because you don't have a lot of free board in many cases, and folks need to pay attention to what the storm surge is on the sound side as well as on the ocean side. So look at some of the products that the Hurricane Center produces. The Storm Surge Watch Warning has been around since last year. The folks that make decisions, your emergency managers, Mary Beth Noons, and Rebecca Gay, as well as your Board of Commissioners and your county administrator, will need to look at the KML file that I have circled there. That is a GIS-based file, and it actually shows the true representation of the watch and warning for Currituck County, should Currituck County be included in a storm surge watcher warning. The important thing for you all as citizens of Currituck to remember is that if a storm surge warning is issued, that tells you that the potential for life-threatening surge exists, and you need to closely follow any directions as far as evacuation that your local officials give you. There's another product, though, that you can use to help you decide, or at least give you a sense of how much water you might experience in your town or in your neighborhood. These values are separated into five groups. The gray area is inundation of a foot or less. The blue area is an inundation from one to three feet. The yellow is three to six feet. The orange is six to nine feet, and the red is greater than nine feet. In general, the easiest way to think of this is, if there's yellow, orange, or red, there will be a storm surge warning that'll be issued by the Hurricane Center, and that's when you need to move, because that's when life-threatening surge is anticipated. Those lower numbers tend to be a situation where folks can, in many cases, ride out the storm, but you may be encouraged, if not asked, to evacuate, even in areas where we're only talking about a foot or so of surge. So you've got to keep very close tabs on not only the storm surge information, but also what your local officials are telling you. There are occasions, and we had it last year, where storms try and form close to the southeast coast. We actually had a storm early last year that formed close to the South Carolina coast, and prior to last year, there was never any mechanism for the Hurricane Center to issue a watcher or warning prior to initiating advisories. Well, that process now exists. The Hurricane Center, if they think a storm is going to develop very close to the coast, can actually issue a tropical storm or hurricane watch prior to initiating advisories on that storm. And so that gives local officials the opportunity and a little bit of additional heads-up that they didn't have that a significant impact might occur. From a timing perspective, the Hurricane Center last year started producing time-of-arrival graphics for tropical storm-force winds. These are extremely useful in terms of giving you, not only you, but your decision-makers in the county, a chance to see when tropical storm-force winds might begin to impact Currituck County. And it's tropical storm-force winds that begin the process of not only ending evacuation, but potentially, if the winds get strong enough, limiting the rescue services that are available, because it becomes unsafe. And there's really two types of graphics. There is an earliest possible graphic, and then there's a most likely graphic. So if we focus on this image on northeast North Carolina, you can see that the earliest time for tropical storm-force winds to come would be 9:00 p.m. Thursday. That's the top-right graphic. But the most likely time for it to occur is about 12 hours later, about 9:00 a.m. In general, for most storms that are going to impact northeast North Carolina, there's going to be about a 12-hour difference between the earliest time of arrival and the most reasonable time of arrival. So finally, I just want to go through some situational awareness resources. If you all out there are using our webpage, which is weather.gov/akq, we've got another page that we originally developed specifically for our emergency management community, but now it's a public-facing page, and one that we're kind of proud of, because it puts resources from our office locally and national centers together in one place that's easy to use, that's easy to use on your smartphone, or your tablet, or any other technology they might want to use. On these pages, we have different tabs, and the tab that you see here is our Rain and Snow Forecast tab. This is our winter version. Everything in the right column there in green is produced locally by our office in Wakefield, and each of those six hourly snowfall graphics is an individual six-hour accumulation, which helps public works and Departments of Transportation know not only when the snow is going to start, but also when it might be heaviest and when it'll end. The page now, if you look at it, simply has rainfall information, and the top five graphics are accumulations out to three days, with the bottom sets of graphics being national graphics from the Weather Prediction Center. And then our Severe Weather page has all the information you might want from the Storm Prediction Center, put in one place that you can access it very easily, relative to not only the forecast of severe thunderstorms out to eight days, but also where, for example, severe thunderstorm and tornado watches might exist across the U.S. If we do have a significant tropical storm or hurricane, especially one that might impact the U.S., we produce specific storm pages that will allow folks to take a look at all of the graphics and text information from the National Hurricane Center, as well as rainfall and severe weather graphics out to three days in advance of that storm. And the easiest way to get to that is weather.gov/akq, and then slash whatever the storm name is. If you wanted to go take a look at our page for Chris, you just do Chris, and then our folks that produce the page added 2018 on it. So if you go to weather.gov/akq/chris2018, you can see what the page looked like for Hurricane Chris. And then finally, a local page that scrolls automatically, updates every 15 minutes, is available for most of the localities in our area of responsibility. You can see Currituck there in the left column, third one down, and these are designed to be used in an EOC situation, and are available 24/7/365. And again, I want to appreciate the opportunity to come and speak, not only to the Board today, but also to you as citizens of Currituck County, and I hope all of you stay safe for the rest of the hurricane season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sammler, and thanks for your service. Mr. Sammler's going to retire in September, so good luck and Godspeed.
Appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
So much. Moving on, presentation of advanced law enforcement certificates to Lieutenant Terrence Sutton and Sergeant Nathan Buddy Capps, Jr. If y'all can please come forward, we're going to get the Commissioners to come around the horseshoe here and do a little presentation ceremony. Please bring your family and your children if you want. You're more than welcome to come up.
Y'all are really committed to this county, and I've seen you around, I've seen the way you've helped yourselves in the county. It's commendable to say the least, and I'm proud to say you're a part of our county. And I know you put a lot of work into your job, into your profession, and it's- And I know you put a lot of work into your job, into your profession, and it shows in your everyday service, so thank you for that. And if I can, start with Sergeant Capps, who has by virtue of authority vested in it by the laws of the state of recognition of the attainment of training and educational objectives commensurate with the role of a professional law enforcement officer and a personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina. The Attorney General and Chairman of the Members of the North Carolina Sheriff's Association Education and Training Standards Commission through the authority vested in them by the laws of the state, by the state hereby award to Nathan Buddy Capps, Jr., his advanced law enforcement certificate. Congratulations. And if I can now, to Lieutenant Terrence Sutton, I'm sorry. Saying by virtue of authority vested in it by the laws of the state and its recognition of the attainment of training and educational objectives commensurate with the role of a professional law enforcement officer and a personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina. The Attorney General and Chairman of the Members of the North Carolina Sheriff's Association and Training Standards Commission through authority vested in them by the laws of the state to hereby award to Terrence Sutton advanced law enforcement certificate. Congratulations. Thank y'all for your service. It's much appreciated and I'm looking forward to more of the events and thanks for keeping Currituck safe and we thank you so much.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thanks, Sergeant. Appreciate it.
Moving on to public hearing. Consideration in action PB 14-32 Tucker's Cove. Request for an amended preliminary plat use permit to add five additional lots to the original 25-lot Type 2 traditional development for property located on Tulsa Creek Road, tax map 39, parcel 13A Crawford Township. If I could have anyone that's going to come up and speak to this to be sworn in? Sir, if you're speaking in public comment, you don't need to be sworn in.
Whatever you want me to do.
But you're welcome to be sworn in.
I would suggest that you swear a minute. If you're going to consider anything he might have to say, you're in the course of the proceeding.
Yes, sir. Put your left hand on the bobble and raise your right hand. Thank you. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it.
I do.
Thank you. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero. Sir, you can have a seat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case before you tonight is an amended preliminary plat use permit. It is for area 46.2 acres located along Tulsa Creek Road. It is all zone, single-family mainland, and it is designated rule in the Courthouse sub-district of the land use plan. The request is to add five lots that were previously unusable. This was originally, it came before the Board of Commissioners in August of 2015 and received a use permit for 25 lots. There was a permit extension granted in August of 2017 and in 2018, it received construction drawing approval. In 2015, there were five lots that were considered unbuildable due to, there were ditches located on these lots. Let me go back to the aerial photo here and you can see some of these ditches in the aerial photo that were impacting these five lots. Once the site improvement started in conjunction with the construction drawing approval, these ditches have been relocated and associated with that construction. Since then, they have, these five lots have been reevaluated and they are now provisionally suitable for septic. There will be public water out there and sewer, I mean, sorry, on-site septic, which is why we're here. The Technical Review Committee has approved this amendment of the five additional lots. Now I'm going to go over the, with the use permit, we have the findings of fact that we have to find and I'm going to go over the preliminary staff findings for the use permit here, that the use, there's four and of those four, two are for staff, that the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. The 2006 land use plan classifies this site as rule within the courthouse sub-area. The policy emphasis for the courthouse sub-area indicates in areas where on-site wastewater is proposed and other county services are limited, development density should be one to two acres per, one to two units per acre. The proposed development density is .45 units per acre. And the proposed use is in keeping with the policy of the plan. Some of those plans are policy PR6, policy ES2, and policy WQ5. All those were listed out in your staff report. Another finding that we have to make is that the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. And the Currituck County has adequate public facilities to serve the proposed subdivision. We'll be serving it with water and we'll have adequate fire, rescue, and law enforcement to serve the subdivision. The schools, in the staff report, you see that this subdivision is generating seven elementary school students, two middle school students, and four high school students. And we are still within the 85% capacity for the schools. So with that, I'll take any questions that the board may have.
The schools, you said that's for the whole subdivision, not just for these additional four lots, correct?
Correct. That's for the entire subdivision. When we ran the numbers, the calculations for just these five lots, we'll have created one elementary school students and less than one middle school student and less than one high school student for these additional five lots. The numbers that I gave you before, seven elementary school, two middle school, and four high school, that's for the entire 30-lot subdivision.
The drainage ditches, and again, if there's something that they need to, again, just tell me that they, we approved the moving of the drainage ditches and the improvements which allowed these lots to be considered later on?
Yes. If you have specific questions about that, that would be an applicant question, but yes.
And I guess you might answer this one. Since it came in '14, we approved it in '15. How many lots are the 51% rule versus the 75% rule before the developer walk away? What is this subdivision under? Do we know?
I'm not sure on that. I'd have to get some clarification on that.
Okay. I'll see if they might know.
Okay.
All my questions for them.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? With that, I'll call Mr. Bissell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll first try to address your question, Commissioner Hall, and I am honestly not sure what the answer to that is, but I believe that the developer would be willing to wait until the 75% build-out to go to the turnover. And this subdivision, we actually expect will build out fairly quickly and so I don't think that delaying that will be a problem.
I ask because I'd rather have one set of rules versus two sets of rules for different
What these additional five lots do is actually get it back to the original sketch plan that was submitted in 2014 that was reviewed and approved administratively. This was not a board approval, but this is actually the original 2014 sketch plan showing the 30 lots and the plan is almost identical to that with the addition of these five lots. There are no additional roadways that are being proposed in connection with these. These lots are actually fitting in between lots that are already under construction and if you look at page 22 of the packet where the special use permit criteria are laid out, Ms. LaCicero addressed two of those. The other two, including those, are addressed on that page, which include the no danger to public health or safety, not injurious to the value of abutting lands that are in harmony in the area are addressed and the TRC comments have all been addressed and I'd be glad to answer any questions. I think there was a question about a drainage ditch.
Just for clarity, for me, these lots were on the plat originally and you removed them, why?
The Health Department initially turned down those lots because of drainage concerns, primarily.
And then after you cleared it, they were able to establish that at Wood Park, is that the...
Right. So we met with Kevin Carver out there and evaluated each lot and we did an actual plan for a system on each lot that he was satisfied with. One of the lots actually had a ditch running through it that drained part of the adjacent subdivision to the east, which was actually not in accordance with their approved plan, but we rewrote that ditch in order to accommodate that existing drainage pattern.
Now, when you did that, I mean, have you guys have been in contact with the other subdivision to make sure that you don't have a problem with the two of you guys? You said you redid it.
We've accepted their drainage, basically.
Okay, you've accepted it, okay.
Right.
All right. I noticed these four lots are a little bit larger than the others. Now, I think 40,000 square feet is what you're saying these four lots are each?
Yes, they are.
So they're a little bit larger.
It might be slightly overhordy, but there's a 40,000 square foot lot minimum.
Okay. Well, they look larger, okay. And there's no interconnectivity because of the fact of the lots, of the size of the subdivision?
Well, there are wetlands on the west side and the east side is already developed with lots that back up to this subdivision, so there's really no opportunity for connectivity there.
I see that you have like, I guess, one road going in, but you also have four or five lots to the left, I guess would be to the north, that looks like part of your subdivision also.
Right. There's a cul-de-sac road there with four lots on it and that piece of the subdivision is actually separated from the rest of it by a wetland slough that runs through there and takes drainage from across Tulsa Creek Road and takes that to the sound, or to Tulsa Bay.
All right. Page 26. Let me make sure I'm getting you this right. Let's go to number three under the North Carolina Coastal Management, which is the second, I guess, big paragraph section where it talks about inconsistent limited use. I'm not sure if Lori or you would be able to explain that, but make sure I got it right. The proposed number of units per acre also appear to be inconsistent with the limited service designation which is used on nearby properties. Should a KMA major permit be needed for this development, consistency with the land use plan will be required in order for KMA major permit to be approved. Did we need that?
They're not proposing anything that we need a KMA major permit. It is in rule designation as far as the land use plan, but it's also in the courthouse sub-area, which does allow for a little bit higher density than in just straight rule classification.
Okay.
Right. And this is actually less than half of the density that's allowed by that courthouse sub-area suggested density in the land use plan. But there is no KMA major permit required, so it's really not an issue.
Any further questions for Mr. Bissell? Thank you, sir. With that, I'll open the public hearing and I understand we have one gentleman that would like to speak. Sir, if you would, state your name and address for the record when you get up here, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Buddy Jennings, Lousoy Road, right across the highway from your subdivision. And my concern is the water off Lousoy Road, Tulsa Creek Road drains through two ditches, through two culverts, crossing Tulsa Creek Road through that property. My question is, who is going to assure us and how can you assure us that they're going to keep these ditches open so our water drains? What legally? I don't want his word. I want something in writing that our water is, the ditches will be, I didn't expect the old lady that had the property to dig them ditches, clean them out. And the state's not going to, but they're making a load of money off this and somebody needs to keep the ditches open because you can go there when it rains and you can see it flowing under there. I'll walk back there, the ditches haven't been dug in years and our water is not going to go anywhere if it can't go there. It's not going on down the highway. This is a suggestion that y'all might want to take into consideration because I live and come out Lousoy Road every day. Take a right, me and a dog go to 7-Eleven. Well, the curve where the cul-de-sac is, if you don't lower the speed limit, and then I don't know if it'll do any good, I'm 125 to 150 yards from the cul-de-sac probably, the road. I come out and before I can get in third gear, it's nothing unusual, somebody is up my hayne. I'm telling you, they fly around there. Somebody's going to get hit coming out of that cul-de-sac. My suggestion would be maybe slow the speed limit to 45. It might help. There's been, Dan probably knows and some of you may remember, we've had quite a few wrecks in that area in the last 15 years. They come around that curve and there's no time. You can't see them. If I can't see them, and I got 125 to 150 yard advance for these people trying to pull out, might be something you want to think about. But I would like, before anything's approved for any additional lots, something, and I would be the one to know if it can be put some kind of way where somebody has to be responsible. If I go to soil and water and say, hey, this water's not flowing, soil and water goes out there and says, okay, you got to dig the ditch. Johnny homeowner fills the ditch because he don't want it in his backyard. That's all, that's my big concern, is the water going and the curve ain't going to affect me because I'm a little further away, but it might help somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Couple things on that, if I could. Mr. Scanlon, have we ever asked for any type of a survey from DOT on that stretch?
For speed limit?
Yes, sir.
We have not.
Can we do that?
You can.
I think it'd behoove us to do that because we've had through the years quite a few persons come in and I travel Tulsa Creek the same way on occasion and it's an ongoing issue. Even if we lower the speed limit, it's not going to prevent people from sailing up and down Tulsa Creek Road, but it certainly would benefit us to reach out to NC DOT and address the speed limit, the whole stretch of Tulsa Creek Road.
Especially with the amount of houses that have now been constructed and approved years back. I mean, we're now finally getting into those houses. I would agree with you.
Right.
Next thing would be for probably Ms. LaCicero. Is any of this drainage changing from the original approval?
No, they're not changing any.
So we had previously approved the drainage and the lot, correct?
Correct. And there's a stormwater narrative that was included in your packet and in that it talks to the developer will be responsible for maintaining all the BMPs and the swells until such time as it's turned over to the Property Owners Association.
And then in the instance that there is an issue with blockage, would the county request that that subdivision clean their ditches? How does that work? If you can explain that to Mr. Jones, that'd be great.
That would be, we would work with the Homeowners Association to bring them into compliance, that they have to adhere to their stormwater plan and make sure everything is working properly.
What's the consequences if they don't?
Well, we'd start enforcement action against them. Well, we'd start enforcement action against them.
Which is why it's a consequence.
Well, we'd.
Don't do it. What happens? Did you do it and pull in?
Well, that's where we would work through this and we would.
That's no guarantees.
We have that ability to go actually in there if they're failing to comply, to clear it and charge them.
And assess them, that's correct.
We actually could step in at some point when it became a hazard, a severe hazard.
Because right now, there's T-24 inch culverts and a 15 inch culvert right around that area.
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot of water running through there, so they're going multiple, it looks like multiple drainages out to the sounds. I mean, it looks like we have a lot of exit points there right now.
It's improving. It was probably one of the, there are times you go through in a good rain and you'll get about an inch of water on the road and you'll hydroplain easily because it's a slow bank in there. So it has improved with these other subdivisions where people are clearing out the ditches. I think I understand what you're saying, but will they continue to clear them out? And that's a concern that you definitely would have. But we have that ability to define them or go in there and step in and do it ourselves and charge them.
We'd be able to do some, take some corrective action through our enforcement process, yes.
First, we're going to send out Mr. Payment, our enforcer, to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do and then we'll take corrective action after that.
Mr. White's already out enforcing something today.
Right. So anyone else want to speak to this matter? With that, I'll close the public hearing and I'll open the floor for a motion.
It's a lengthy one. I move to approve PB 1432 Tucker's Cove with staff recommendation because the applicant has demonstrated the purpose, use meets the use permits review standards in the UDO. It will not endanger the public health or safety. Use will adhere to county health and safety regulations, including recommendations by the Almaral Regional Health Services. All lots will front on interior streets. No lot will connect directly to Tulsa Creek Road. That is, they're an exception though. We're only talking about these four lots, correct?
Yes.
Because we do have a couple on the cul-de-sac, I'm sure. Will not endanger the value of adjoining or abutting lands will be held in harmony with the area which is located. Land to the east is developed with single-family homes. Track will be developed with similar lot sizes but lower density. Wetlands and much of the woodlands will be preserved. Use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans to 2006 land use plan. Classifies this site as rural with the courthouse subarea. Policy emphasizes the courthouse subarea, indicating areas whereas the site wastewater is proposed with other county services are limited. Development density should be limited to the one to two units per acre. Proposed development density is 0.54 acres per, units per acre. Proposed use is in keeping with the policies of the plan, some of which are policy PR6, ES2, WQ5, WQ6. Use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Currituck County has adequate public facilities to serve the proposed subdivision. Public water is available at the property. Proposed development will consist of 30 residential lots. Based on the current student generation rates, proposed subdivision project will generate the following students: seven elementary students, two middle school students, four high school students. And I would also include that the whole subdivision fall under the 75% HOA rule, not so we have one consistent plan instead of two.
I'll second that motion.
If I can, for a point of clarity, there are five lots, not four?
Four, excuse me, five.
And we have a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion passed unanimously. Moving on to next agenda item, PB 18-15 Eagle Creek Golf Course and Grill, request for a text amendment to unified development ordinance, Chapter 5 Development Standards to modify off-premise directional sign standards. And with that, I'll hand it to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight is a text amendment amending the sign ordinance for the signed section, part of the unified development ordinance. Mr. Posh from Eagle Creek Golf Course and Grill came to staff a few months ago wanting to get essentially an off-premise sign. Our ordinance doesn't allow, typically doesn't allow off-premise signs. We do allow very regulated off-premise sign. Typically, these are for businesses adjoining the Currituck County Sound and the Atlantic Intercoastal Waterway. They have to be within two miles from those businesses on property under the same ownership. And it's got to be in a business or a mixed-use zoning district and currently any of these off-premise signs have a maximum square foot of 64 square feet and 15 feet tall. So Mr. Posh presented a text amendment and between staff and the planning board, this is essentially the text amendment, that off-premise signs will be allowed within two miles of a major arterial street in the ag zoning, 32 square feet, 15 feet high, could only list the business name, no logo, and the direction of the business is located. The property no longer has to be located under the same ownership as the business and it applies to the tourist-oriented businesses as listed in the TODs program. North Carolina DOT has the Transit Tourist Oriented Destination Signs Program and that information is in your packet, so you can see exactly what types of businesses would fall under this program. Essentially, if you're allowed to have a sign under the TODs program and you're within two miles of a major arterial and you're a tourist-oriented destination, you would be allowed to have an off-premise sign at 32 square feet and 15 feet high. And this was the language that the planning board endorsed. Staff does have concerns about this, this change, because typically it was only for businesses that are located on the water that did not have good access to the highway. We do have a land use plan that we have two policies that specifically talk to signage and that we've had typically issues with lots of signs on the corridor and over the years we've tried to clean that up. So this, we were concerned about changing the text. However, you have the full text amendment in your packet and if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yes, ma'am. I know originally the staff decided to deny, you know, or to go against it because you were still working on the proper wordage, but you've gone through more since then and because the planning board has also come up. So now you are looking at saying that it can work, but you are still concerned about the number.
We are. We're still concerned. 32 square feet is still a pretty large number. I think if we're going to allow these, we've listed out that it must adhere to the same standards as a TOD as far as the types of businesses. We've got to find that balance of keeping our corridor looking nice, keeping that going, but also allowing enough advertisement for our businesses that may not be located on the corridor to be able to be seen from the tourists that are coming through, especially on the mainland. So we've got to find that balance. So we've talked about a little bit smaller than 32 square feet. So I think 18 to 20 is things that we were speaking about today.
In a few discussions with staff and a couple of the commissioners, we talked about moving that to a three by six sign and there were some concerns about the height and moving that down to 10 feet. You know, a TOD sign is five feet in the air, like over my head. So, you know, it's still allowing 10 feet is up there pretty good. So we thought that was more agreeable versus the four by eight at this point and any other. In staff discussion, we kind of thought that it's a very restrictive on where you can put these signs. Staff was concerned about the, what's the fancy word you used?
Proliferation.
Proliferation. Proliferation of signs going up throughout the county and we really were racking our brains trying to figure out who might utilize this ordinance and it was actually very, very limited. You know, we want to try and help promote our businesses and help them to grow and.
Part of this concern that came with me was the fact that, like any tourist-related business or business that is not on the highway, and I use, I all stand by the rural center, one of the best kept secrets in Currituck. If you don't miss the little sign that says, it's the size of a street sign that says rural center, which a lot of people go, what's that? They miss it. Or you don't hit spot road. Well, now we have a sign that kind of says, hey, this is a county park. And when you go back, people go, wow, this is really great. Well, that sign helps a whole lot. I think that's what we're trying to do with some of our tourist-related businesses as well. And it's tough because I don't want to see 60 million billboards. I don't want to see, you know, every five feet, you know, bermashave or any of those signs where you see them all the time or any of that stuff for those of you who are old enough. But, and it was a lot of thought on my part in discussion with Ms. Cicero, LaCicero, excuse me, and the staff and some of the other businesses. So that's just my thought on that.
So if I could, just for clarification, the TODs signs, there's a list of businesses that we've borrowed from the TODs program of what could use, could access, could use this designation. Amusement parks, cultural centers, facility tour locations, historic register structure or site, recreation area, natural phenomenon, zoological, botanical, parks and farms, agricultural facilities. So those are the, those would be the only, I guess, commercial uses that would have access to this, to an off-premise sign. They must fall under that. We define those through the TODs program using the same language as the TODs program. And there would also be commercial properties that are currently not adjoining a major arterial. So it's a little bit of, we've refined it and, yes, and give it some structure so that it's not just going to be every business, but it's got to be one of those qualifying businesses.
And this is countywide if it passes. So just for clarity, if Mr. Posh would just share with us approximately where he would like to, or he's proposing to put his sign up. I know there's a temporary structural sign on the corner of Survey Road and Currituck Highway, which I know is not in compliance and it's just a structure there right now, sign structure. But I would be curious to know where he's proposing to put that, put his sign for his business under this guidelines.
Okay, that would be a good question for the applicant when he speaks. And it would be countywide with the exception of, it would be prohibited on properties in the outer banks. So it'd only be on the mainland.
Mainland only, okay.
Which of the, I'm sorry?
Go ahead. Primarily because you don't have a two-mile stretch.
Which of the classifications does the golf course fall under?
Under recreation area. The definition of recreation area that we're adding is golfing, excluding miniature golf, driving ranges, chip and putt areas, and indoor golf, horseback riding, surfing, bicycling, boating, fishing, picnicking, hiking or rafting, and where other, where either the attraction or then 10 miles on necessary equipment can be rented.
Got it.
Ms. Cicero, another question. Let's say, I mean, there's businesses down on Poplar Branch that have, they offer hunting and fishing guides and tours. So they'd be able to put their signs in the May Highway now under this because it's under tourism and recreation and stuff?
They would have to fall under one of these and it would have to be a location of they're just for guiding purposes. I'm not sure if that, if they would be able to put their sign up. I mean, it's usually very specific to a location and like their services.
They have their business, let's say they have their business on Poplar Branch Road and it's a business and they use, they bring in, you know, tourists or people to come in to do the guides and fishing and whatever like that for, during the summer months or winter months for tourism or whatever. I mean, would they, would they fall underneath this somewheres?
They may.
Okay.
Yeah, they may.
Okay.
We would have to look for the specific business and.
Okay. So businesses, so other, so when we do this though, if a business is open up, they'll still be able to follow this and they can, as long as they fall underneath it, they can put their signs out in the future?
Well, actually, it's only for businesses that were in existence prior to June 1st of this year. We've added that language just so that.
So existing businesses, even if they were like that, they fall, then they're good to go, okay.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? If, Mr. Posh, could you please come forward?
Sure.
If you would state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Tim Posh, 109 Greenview Road, Moayok, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Did you have a question for me? What was your question?
Yes, I was just curious in the location that you would be placing a sign on the arterial area. I know that right now on the corner of Survey Road and Currituck Highway, there's a wooden structured sign that is just there and I don't know if that's the location that you're looking at or.
Well, we originally, that was where the old mill run sign was and I originally, four or five years ago, talked to you guys about grandfathering clause for that sign and didn't get through that. So it would go right there. The height restrictions, you know, that's a real low ditch right there. So from the street down there, you know, it's not going to be 15 feet and you need, it needs to be 15 feet high just so you can see it because you know where the road is and the ditch is way down there. So that's why those, the 32 square feet.
Is it 15 feet from the road or is it 15 feet from the?
The height is what he's referring to.
Is it from the?
Grade of the road.
That's a good question. Is it from the ground or is it from the road?
It'd probably be from the grade where the sign is placed.
Yes, right now it's at 15 feet.
Because the road has a curve.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I can lower it. You know, I think the one sheet of plywood is big enough for me. If it's too big for you, we can talk about, you know, making it a little bit smaller, but you need to be able to see it, you know, the traffic. I do have a stoplight there, which is nice, so we do get a few people stopped there and can see it, but that would be a perfect size.
Well, and as we change policies, it adheres to the entire county, so we have to take that into consideration. So we're not planning this just for your location, but you happen to be here, so that's why I asked the question as far as your location. But again, we're making this consistent throughout the mainland of the county when we start changing policies.
Sure. I just feel like I'm a tourist destination and I need to drive those tourists to my destination. I mean, I'm the only golf course in Moayok and I know you're Currituck County and you have plenty of golf courses, but I'd like to drive those tourists to my location and a sign along the road would be helpful, very helpful.
Do we have any way of finding out? I thought when we were doing the, like another one, the election signs, we were talking about their grade and road for putting them out. I thought it was from the grade of the road, not from the lot because one lot may be lower than the next one. Do we have anything or any way that we can find out?
I can check the sign ordinance and see if we have any caveats for that.
Because I thought we, that was a big discussion about when we were putting the big banners out for election signs and everything. I know it's a little different, but I mean.
We've spent a tremendous amount of time on signs and since I've been on the board and it was a very long process to come up with the policies that we have in place. So I would adhere that we look into this a little bit further, taking into consideration your request for the height, but I think that we need to get some language defined because there's some questions here that I think is going to create, just like Commissioner Payment brought up about other businesses. So we need to do a little more homework on defining what we want this policy to look like, I believe.
I think that's my only question at the time. I think we already allow like sandwich boards on the outer banks where this is not the outer banks, so, and again, I think we've tightened it up quite a bit and we've made it so no new business can do it. And my calls, Ant Farm doesn't fall into it, but a tourist-related business would and with, I don't know, would it be easier, ma'am, if we continued it for two weeks or till the next commissioners meeting, if we could make sure we have the correct language?
If the board so desires, that would be fine.
My concern is like I said, I don't want to take in, like Commissioner Gilbert said, if that's something we want to make sure because I want to give him the best I can on the sign, but I want to make sure everybody else can say, hey, because what if my road is lower than the lot or what if my, and somebody else gets a. than the lot, or what if my, and somebody else gets a higher one, or..." I think the grade of the road, I think that's what it was, but again, if it gives us more time to make sure we get it right the first time and not have to come back and ask for a change, I think we're better off.
Okay, we can, staff can look into these issues, specifically the grade and where it may be placed.
Did you find any businesses currently now that were, that would fall under this? Is there any other businesses out there right now that were opened prior to June 1st that would fall under this?
That would meet the TODs criteria.
Correct, yeah. I think during the planning board meeting, they found that there was maybe just only two or three that would follow under that.
Yeah, it would be very limited. That's, you know, this has ratcheted down on the potential businesses.
Right.
Well, I think with the suggested changes that have been suggested this evening, I would concur with Commissioner Hall as far as postponing this until we have the adequate language, because we want to be fair and consistent.
And again, my concern is not to have one sign's 20 feet, one sign's 15 feet, one's only 10. If we use the grade of the road, if that's what it words, I think we're better off than we have consistency. So when you're driving by in a car...
Well, and we had the same issues like at the recycling right there in Moayouk with, I mean, the signage that they have it all on the side of the truck because of the grade of their business. So a lot of discussion's been had as far as the signage.
Would it cause a hardship if we continued this till the next meeting?
No, heck no.
Thank you, Mr. Posh.
Yeah, sure.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. I currently do not have anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing, so I will close the public hearing, and I will open the floor for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we continue this till the next scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting, that we'll give the planning director a chance to check on the options that we have, including what is the height of the sign? Is it the lot or the road? And whatever else we might have that we've asked for. So I'd ask for continuance till the next meeting.
And I will second that and add the conditions of the other businesses that this would be applicable to.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to new business, consideration of an ordinance of the Currituck Board of Commissioners amending Section 2-96A of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to require statement of interest for nominees to advisory boards and amending Section 298 of the Currituck Code of Ordinances to clarify concurrent membership on authorities, boards, and commissions. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, the ordinance amendment before you tonight is to clarify a couple of sections of the chapter from the Code of Ordinances that provide for your appointment of persons to counties, boards, authorities, or commissions. First of all, I would note that it is an ordinance that must be approved unanimously for its adoption to occur tonight. Obviously, that cannot occur with some commissioners absent, so it will come back to you at your next meeting, at which time it may be adopted by a simple majority vote. I'll quickly walk you through the ordinance amendments. First of all, Section 2-96 provides for the method of appointment to and removal from boards. The board had expressed some interest that persons who wanted to be appointed to a county board, authority, or commission have presented some form of application or statement of interest so that the board would have an understanding of who they were and what they were interested, what board they were interested in serving. So this ordinance amendment would provide at line 27 on page one, that only persons that have filed a statement of interest with the clerk to the board shall be nominated. Further, there's a second sentence you'll see there that's proposed for amendment or addition to the section. There has been expressed by a member or some members of this board that, two years ago, when the last board left office, prior to the new board taking its oath, a sitting member of that board who had not been reelected was appointed to serve on a county board. And because there was some concern by that having occurred, there is proposed that any person who holds the office of county commissioner at the first meeting of the Board of Commissioners in December cannot be appointed to a county board authority or commission unless they are beginning a new term of office at that meeting, meaning, again, that an outgoing commissioner may not be appointed to a county board at the first meeting of December unless they have been reelected and are beginning a new term of office.
Okay, so this is just concerning outgoing, not...
That's correct.
Just election cycle.
That's correct. And it would only be at that meeting. So once that commissioner had left the board and they were a citizen or no longer serving as county commissioner, they could certainly be appointed to any board or commission.
So it could happen that same evening when the new board comes on?
If he's reelected.
If he's reelected. No, it could not occur that same evening. It would have to wait until the second meeting in December, first meeting the following January.
Unless he's reelected.
That's correct.
Okay, in the same, okay.
And then the next proposed amendment is in Section 2-98 of the Code of Ordinances, beginning at line 35 on page one of the proposed ordinance before you. There's been some confusion over time about the number of boards, commissions, or authorities that a person may serve at one time. And secondly, what is a county board, authority, or commission? And so there, we've gone back and forth that, well, those boards, authorities, or commissions created by the Board of Commissioners through the Code of Ordinances, those are the types of boards that a person could only serve on one at a time. There's been some other thought that, well, the ABC Board, for example, because it's created by state statute or other boards created by state statute, are not those kind of county boards and commissions. So confusion has ensued. But I believe the intent has been that a person may serve at one time on no more than one board, authority, or commission, that this board appoints persons to, whether it be a board, authority, or commission created by ordinance adopted by this board, or whether it be a state statute that provides a seat for you to make an appointment. So this will clarify that, that number, that you cannot serve on more than, no one can serve on more than one board, authority, or commission at any one time. So that means any board, whether it's one created by this body through an ordinance or whether it's a statute that creates a seat for you to make an appointment. That's what is proposed. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, and we'll have the opportunity to talk about this again in two weeks.
So for clarity, if you serve on a planning board, you can't serve on a board of adjustment?
That's correct.
If the commissioners appoint somebody, they can only serve on one board.
That's right. That's right. Commissioners can serve on any number of boards by virtue of your office, but someone can only serve on the planning board. They could not serve on the planning board and the ABC Board. They could not serve on the planning board and a service district board, and so on.
But that's only for county appointments? In other words, if the governor said, "Mike, you're going to send on the state board of education," had nothing to do with Currituck County?
That's, yeah, that's some other appointing authority.
Okay, I'm good.
But what this is saying is that this board has an appointing authority, whatnot, and someone cannot receive an appointment from this board for more than one authority, board, or commission at a time.
Any questions for Mr. McCree? With that, open floor for a motion.
We can't.
We can, we just can't.
Yes, I would say should go ahead and act on it that it's first reading in the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion is, or item is continued to the next meeting when it will only require a simple majority. Moving on, consideration and acceptance of bid for county-owned property and adoption of Upset Bid Resolution 103 Bluefish Court Walnut Island Subdivision. But that'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through a tax foreclosure sale, the county has become owner of the lot at 103 Bluefish Court in Walnut Island. There is before you at your place a Google map that shows its location. You'll notice that most of the lot has eroded away, as it is a canal front lot that does not appear to have any bulkhead there in Walnut Island. The county has received an unsolicited offer from James and Ursula Deseray, who have offered to buy the lot for $7,105. That's what the county paid for it at the tax sale. And they have posted the bond required by statute for that offer. The general statute then goes on to provide, there are several different ways that a county may proceed to sell property that it owns. Typically, Currituck has utilized the upset bid method. So what this resolution does is it proposes to accept their bid, but after going through an upset bid period. So after you adopt this resolution, there will be a notice of this proposed sale and bid process published in the newspaper for a period of 10 days. Other persons will have the opportunity to upset the bid by the percentage provided for by statute and posting a bond. And that process will then continue until we finally have a final bidder. At that time, it will be brought back to this board for your consideration of the bid. At any time, the board may reject any and all bids and refuse to accept any. But it will be a way, it is a process and a way for the county to dispose of property and put the property back on the tax roll.
Any questions for Mr. McCree?
Do we know the value of the lot?
I don't know the value. See if we can bring it up real quick.
More curiosity than anything. It's a very small lot.
Yes, it's about 4,300 square feet.
I think the tax rate shows around 20,000.
The lot is 4,370 square feet in size. Before, I think that's before the erosion.
Can they put it back with bulkhead?
I believe they could with CAMA permits, put it back to bulkhead and fill behind the bulkhead.
Any further questions?
I'm good.
With that, open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to board appointments, Jordan Nosing Home, domiciliary, Community Advisory Committee. Joan West has been recommended to us. This is a consensus appointment, so I would move to appoint Joan West for this board. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just one question. Does Ms. West serve on any other boards currently?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
That's a question.
Great question. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to county managers' report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon, for nothing.
Just making sure everybody's paying attention, that's all.
Make a motion for adjournment.
We have a motion for adjournment.
I don't know. I don't want to answer that question. I'll pay the ones going to say.
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.